The hour of 7:30 PM having arrived, in a quorum of voters being present, it is my distinct pleasure to call to order the 2021 Tewksbury Annual Town Meeting. My name is Denise Graffio, town clerk, and I am privileged to open Town Meeting this evening. Let the record show that a properly served and returned warrant is in possession. Due to moderator Todd Johnson being elected to the Board of Selectmen, the moderator position is now vacant. In the first order of business is the election of a temporary moderator. I open the floor to nominations for Town Moderator.
Good evening, Madam Clerk. At this time, I'd like to offer a motion to nominate Mr. Scott Wilson as our temporary clerk.
Second.
Moderator.
Second. I will accept a motion to elect Scott Wilson as temporary moderator for the 2021 Annual Town Meeting in May 5th, 2021 Special Town Meeting. Hearing no other nominations, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The motion is adopted. Scott Wilson has been elected temporary moderator. Congratulations, Mr. Wilson. I'm now going to swear Mr. Wilson in. If you could raise your right hand. And repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Scott Wilson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The bylaws, rules, and regulations.
The bylaws, rules, and regulations.
Of the Town of Tewksbury.
Of the Town of Tewksbury.
And I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
As temporary moderator.
As temporary moderator.
For the Town of Tewksbury.
For the Town of Tewksbury.
To which I have been elected.
To which I've been elected.
According to law.
According to law.
Into the best of my ability.
Into the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right. Am I talking in which one? Or does it matter, this one? Okay. All right. Yep. All right, good evening. Although I've held a number of positions in this community and I've certainly run meetings, this is a little nerve-wracking being up here, so be kind, all right? So let's see. These are obviously still unusual times due to the pandemic, but we do our best to make this town meeting a familiar experience. Although with some extra precautions, let me outline a few of those precautions. Voters are strongly advised to either wear a mask or facial covering at Town Meeting. A limited supplies of masks is available at the check-in area. Hand sanitizer has been placed at the entrance and the exit of the building. All areas have been suited for a one-way traffic flow to avoid face-to-face encounters and maintain a six-foot a six-foot separation of voters and staff. Directional and spatial arrows have been taped to the floor or walls, as well as certain seating areas to indicate six-foot intervals. Microphones will be sanitized after each speaker. Efforts will be made to reduce crowding as the meeting adjourns, and we will direct staggered timing, though that's going to, we'll explain that a little further later. Trash and recycling bins will be placed at exits to dispose of used PPE handouts, et cetera. Take note of the exits at the front and the back of the gym. Also, restrooms are located in the rear of the gym. Let the record show that a properly served and returned warrant is in possession. I'm going to ask you to stand while we recite the Pledge of Allegiance and an opening prayer or moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you can remain standing for a moment, we'd like to take a moment of silence. I want to call for a moment of silence to remember all those affected by the coronavirus, especially those throughout our country and here locally who have succumbed to it. I also want to honor the memory of all the citizens of Tewksbury and former Town employees who passed away during the year. I ask now for a moment of silence in honor of their memory. Thank you. Please be seated. May I have the Vice Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Jane Wellman, please come to the podium for announcements of items
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and please allow me to add my voice in welcoming each of you to Town Meeting. Town Meeting is the purest form of democracy with a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. The power of your elected officials, my fellow residents, is derived solely from the consent of the governed. Tonight, my fellow citizens, is about you, your voice, your questions, and your vote. The agenda for our business is set before us in the warrant, and we look forward to an open, productive meeting. Before we begin, I would like to recognize the passing of Senior Town Council Charles Zerulis, who served the Town of Tewksbury for 58 years, from 1968 to 2021. He was a fixture at every Town Meeting and served as a tremendous resource for Town Managers, Town Moderators, Town Clerks, and the body of Town Meeting. His knowledge of municipal law and of this town has never been and never will be matched. He served Tewksbury with the highest level of honesty, dedication, professionalism, and dignity. He was a caring and giving man, and he will be greatly missed by all of us. And finally, on a lighter note, by way of announcements, please join me and your neighbors in the Town Cleanup Day on Saturday, May 9, sponsored by the Beautification Committee. Please note that electronics recycling and document shredding will be offered on Saturday at the DPW, and more information will be available on the Town website. Thank you very much.
Once again, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming to Town Meeting. I now ask if you could take a moment and silence your phones, it would be much appreciated. As we begin our meeting, I want to take a moment to talk about our ground rules. Town Meeting is the legislative body for our community, where we work together to debate the merits of articles within the warrant before you. Please take a moment to refer to the glossary of terms at the back of your warrant. Because Tewksbury has an open Town Meeting, each registered voter is eligible to vote on fiscal issues, zoning changes, bylaw amendments, and other matters affecting the Town as presented in the warrant. Visitors may attend the meeting and sit in the Reserve for Visitors section. Members of the media may sit in the Visitors section or at the press table. This meeting is being recorded. As we move through the articles, presenters on the articles will be allowed to speak first on the article before I open the floor to debate. A voter desiring to speak should approach the microphone before me, await for recognition, and then identify oneself by name and street address for the record. I ask members of all Boards to do the same. Each speaker is allowed up to five minutes to speak on an article. Please speak clearly into the microphone so that the body can hear you. I will let you know when you have 30 seconds left on your time by tapping the podium. When you hear the tapping, it is your signal to wrap up your remarks. Speakers may disagree with any official, with any other voter, volunteer, or any Board. However, we have a strong tradition in Tewksbury of maintaining a respectful dialogue during Town Meeting. I will do everything I can to ensure that each speaker has shown respect and that your questions are answered. I ask that all Town Meeting attendees kindly do the same. Residents refusing to conduct themselves in a manner befitting this body will be asked to cede the floor and potentially be escorted from the meeting. I hope I don't have to enforce that rule. Let's work together to address the issues before this body fairly and efficiently, and perhaps learn some things about our Town and fellow residents in the process. I will accept a motion to move the question. However, I reserve the right to make sure we have at least had some dialogue about the motion. All questions on the floor should be directed to the moderator. In Tewksbury, we have a tradition of not requiring a second to any motion as we presume that the moderator seconds all motions. If you are amending an article, we will take action and vote on the amendment first. Amendments must be presented to the Town Clerk in writing. If the amendment passes, it will then become part of the main motion, and we will discuss it. If the amendment does not pass, then we go back to the main motion that is written in the warrant. We will be discussing the budget tonight. The Board of Selectmen, the School Committee, the Finance Committee, the Town Manager and his finance team, and the many department heads deserve a significant amount of credit for the work that went into this budget and to have the numbers here before us tonight. Residents were previously mailed a warrant. When you came in tonight, you were offered the warrant with the articles we will be discussing tonight, a handout with the Finance Committee recommendations, and a supplement handout from the Town Manager with detailed explanations for a number of articles and funds. Scrivener's errors, if any, are also noted in the document. Please be sure your voter ribbon is showing so that the counters can see it when taking standing counts. Counters, please go to your sections. Ladies and gentlemen, please take note of the counter for your section. This is the person when we're doing a standing count that will be marking you off as counted. Nope, someone's still walking. Thank you. When doing a standing count, it is important that no one be standing in the gym, and there will be no entering or exiting the gym while the vote is in process unless there is an emergency. It is critical that you pay attention to your counter and sit down once counted. Your counter will nod at you when counted. Sitting up here to my left and right are the various Boards of the Town with elected and appointed members, such as the Selectmen, Town Council, Planning Board, Board of Health, Department Heads, Finance Committee, School Committee, Library Trustees, Shawshank Tech School Committee, and the Housing Authority. Let me introduce Mr. Rob Kozmerski. He is the Chair of the Finance Committee. The sole job of the Finance Committee is to advise Town Meeting. Mr. Kozmerski will present motions on most articles except where there's a petitioner or another Board is the appropriate party. Mr. Kozmerski, may I have a motion to waive the reading of the warrant articles?
So moved, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. All those in favor of waiving the reading of the warrant articles, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That is a unanimous vote. I made it through my first vote. Very excited. Maybe it'll get easier after this. I also want to speak about guests. By showing hands, do we have anyone in the gymnasium who hasn't, who is not registered to vote here in Tewksbury? All right, and you guys are sitting in the Visitors section, so thank you. Non-voters are not allowed to address the meeting without prior consent. Typically, we hear from non-voters who are employees, volunteers, or advisors to the Town. Mr. Kozmerski, may I have a motion to permit the following persons to address the meeting?
Mr. Moderator, I move to allow certain anticipated non-residents to speak on issues including Assistant Town Manager Steve Sadwick, Fire Chief Joe Kearns, Superintendent of Schools Chris Malone, School, hello, School Business Manager David Libby, DBW Superintendent Brian Gilbert, Town Engineer Kevin Hardiman, Town Council Kevin Feeley, and others, some of whom may be asked to answer resident questions.
All those in favor of allowing those non-residents to speak or non-residents who need to answer questions, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Another unanimous vote. So in accordance with Town bylaws, tonight we will address the first two sections of the warrant. After Article 29, we will address Section 3 and the zoning articles. We will review the zoning articles by section on Wednesday evening in order to help keep the conversation focused and allow us to have a discussion about the subject at hand. All right. The annual Town Election was held on Saturday, April 10. A total of 2,011 voters, which is 8.5% of eligible voters, cast ballots in the election. Elected this year were Todd Johnson and James Mackey to the Board of Selectmen, Bridget Garabedian and Nick Parsons to the School Committee, Steve Johnson to the Planning Board, Raymond Barry and Robert Scorano to the Board of Health, Christopher Castiglione and Bonnie Page to the Board of Library Trustees, Mark DeFruscia to the Housing Authority, and Cheryl Bartolone to the Shawshank Regional Tech High School Committee. Please join me in welcoming each of them to their new positions. We do not vote on this article as we have already completed the election. I apologize, this may happen a couple times tonight. Do I note that?
Just note that.
Okay. Okay. So there's a Scrivener's error in the index. If you scan down to Article 25, what you would do is delete the text in the warrant which says authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell all or a portion of certain parcels of land. In its place, we are going to add transfer certain parcels of land to the Tewksbury Conservation Commission. Hearing no objections, I'll accept that Scrivener's error. And then vote on it. No. All right. I'll hit my stride at some point tonight. The next article, Mr. Kozmerski, is Article 2.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 2.
Article 2. So the Finance Committee and the Selectmen both voted to adopt this article. Is there any discussion on Article 2?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Through you, Mr. Moderator, I have a couple questions for Mr. Montori, if I could. My name is Vincent Fratalla, 81 Windsor Drive. 81 Windsor Drive. So my question, Mr. Montori, is how are these salaries arrived at for the different elected members in Tewksbury?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. These salaries have been in place well before I got here as Town Manager, and they have just been the same since I've been here. So I'm not sure how the original numbers were derived at.
So do you have any idea how long ago they would have been reviewed by anybody in Town?
I think within a year before I got here, and that was in 2010, they were reviewed and possibly decreased because the Town at the time was having some financial difficulties. But since I've been here, they have not been reviewed.
Okay. So I look at the list here from the Board, especially the Board of Health. You know, after all, they have been through this year with COVID-19, the pandemic, and what they have done for the Town of Tewksbury. We're offering to pay them $315 for their services for the year. You know, and I just think some of these salaries are very disproportionate for some of the things the Town elected officials do. So, I mean, we're spending thousands of dollars on, in this upcoming budget for backhoes and dump trucks and so forth and so on, but we're not really taking care of the people that serve this Town day in and day out. So, and, you know, what's coming up in the very near future, tonight, is discussions about, you know, Boards and so forth. So, you know, I just can't recall when any of these salaries, you know, can get discussed as far as being higher. I just think it needs to be addressed at some point. So my last question, Mr. Montori, is the fact, do you think by increasing these salaries, would it increase the number of people that actually run for positions in the Town of Tewksbury?
I mean, it could. I really can't say. I've never really looked at it that closely. It's something we can look at over the next year. I mean, it could make it more attractive. I think when people decide to run for office, the last thing they look at is salary. I think they do it for the greater good of the community, but that's just my opinion. But it's something we can absolutely look at over the next year.
Yeah, I'm just curious as to how some of the other towns that are adjacent to us pay their employees. I mean, some of them are elected, some of them are appointed, so, you know, I just think it's something with, and speaking of Mr. Fowler, he hasn't had an increase, I think, ever on his 30 years of service as a Planning Board member.
We can look at what our neighboring towns are doing.
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Montori.
Mr. Moderator, Joe Gil, 12 Ellington Road. I want to address the salary issue for the information of the voters. When I was on the Board of Selectmen during a crisis, we had to reduce everybody's salary by 10%. That's what those odd figures made. I thought it would have been returned to its regular amount, but it wasn't. I think in the future, we should look at it. Thank you.
Thank you for that information.
Ms. Moderator, Elizabeth Carey, 50, Langley Lane. You know, when I looked at the Board of Health salary, I kind of did a little look at checking things out. And I went to the annual report, and I saw the staff had a director, two sanitarians, one nurse, one clerk, five members of the Board, and an animal inspector. So I can see where the budget is high, but we can't forget the elected members of the Board of Health. So I don't know if we can do anything with Town Manager. Things are already in place. What I would like to suggest is that the Town Manager form a committee to review these salaries. I just think some of these people have been cheated all hard work. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, there's a motion to adopt Article 2. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That's a unanimous vote. Article 3. The moderator will call out the numbers of each of the articles, one by one. If a voter objects to any particular article being included in the consent calendar, he or she should say the word "hold" when the number is called. The article is then removed from the consent calendar and restored to its original place in the warrant to be acted upon, debated, and voted in the usual manner. After calling of the individual items in the consent calendar, the moderator shall ask the voters, shall ask that the voters pass all the remaining items as a unit. Article 3-30, accepting the annual report. Article 3-31, lease and purchase agreements. Article 3-32, authorize Chapter 90 funds. Article 3-33, reauthorize revolving funds. So Article 3-32 will be pulled out and put in its, I'm sorry. No, 32. 32. 3-32 will be pulled out and put in its place, and we will vote on 3-30, 3-31, and 3-33 collectively.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 3-30, 3-31, and 3-33.
Seeing no one rising, all those in favor of Article 3-30, 3-31, and 3-33, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right. So do you want me to give this? Do you have it? I'll just put it here so I don't. Okay. All right, Article 4. Do you make?
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 4, raise and appropriate $122,849,872 for the purpose of the article.
So I'm going to call out each section for debate. Would anyone like to debate on the general government? On the Finance Department? On community services? On the Council of Aging? On the facilities? On the library? On planning and development? On public safety? On the school department?
All right, a public safety?
Public safety?
Mr. Moderator?
We'll keep going through this, and then we'll debate it in a moment. Let me just get through all the articles. So public safety. Department of Public Works. Unclassified. And transfers. All right, so there's one section, public safety, that there is some debate. Why don't you start us off, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Board, fellow citizens of Tewksbury. My name is Mark Torterisi. Tewksbury resident for approximately 15 years. I believe that Town of Tewksbury employees work hard and deserve their compensation. However, with respect to our dedicated police officers, given the current environment and added pressure and scrutiny that the police face, our exemplary police officers warrant an added level of appreciation. our exemplary police officers warrant an added level of appreciation. I wish there was more money in the budget to allocate to our police force. As I look around the country, I see the results in big cities which have attempted to defund, curtail, or otherwise impair their police departments. I see chaos, rising crime, and anarchy. Portland, Oregon, Minneapolis, San Francisco, and Seattle are examples of cities where anti-police sentiment has led to deteriorating conditions. I believe that Tuxbury residents decidedly do not want similar outcomes in our town and that they support our police officers and the job they do every day. I want to encourage all voters here tonight to approve Article 5. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on Article 4? Seeing no one rise, all those in favor of the adoption of Article 4, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That is a unanimous vote. Article 5.
The Finance Committee... Sorry. The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 5, raise and appropriate $106,571 for the purpose of the article.
Is there any discussion on Article 5? Seeing no one rise, all those in favor of adopting Article 5, which is to raise and appropriate $106,571 for the purpose of this article, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Article 6.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 6, raise and appropriate $67,651 for the purpose of the article.
Seeing no one rise, all those in favor of adopting Article 6, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Although, any opposed? The article passes unanimously. Article 7.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 7, raise and appropriate $159,269 for the purpose of the article.
Seeing no one rise, all those in favor of adopting Article 7, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Signify by saying nay. Article passes unanimously. Article 8. Okay. You want it?
Mr. Moderator, I would ask that Article 8 be amended. There's an amendment that was on the table as residents came in tonight. The amendment reads, to see if the town would vote to appropriate the sum of, and in the amendment, we would delete the word "money" and add $100,668, of which $60,278 will be raised from the tax levy, $7,565 raised from sewer rates, $32,825 raised from water rates. Delete the word "needed" and then include, "in order to fund and implement the collective bargaining agreement between the town and local 833, the American Federation of State and County Municipal Employees, AFL-CIO-AFSME, beginning July 1, 2021, or take any action relative thereto."
Okay, so when we receive an amendment, we would first vote on the amendment and then we will vote on the article. Robbed his Finance Committee offer, and they won't offer an opinion on the... Okay. Okay, so there's an amendment on the floor and I don't see anyone rising, so I will take a vote. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Signify by saying no. All right, the amendment passes unanimously. Rob Article 8.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt, as amended, Article 8, raise and appropriate $100,668 for the purpose of the article.
Seeing no one rise, all those in favor of adopting Article 8, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You know what, I'm going to start that again. All those in favor of adopting Article 8, as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Signify by saying nay. Article 8 passes unanimously. Article 9.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 9, raise and appropriate and transfer $6,797,181 for the purpose of the article.
Seeing no one rise? Come on up. Just give us your name and address for the record.
My name's Charlie Anzoni, 180 Mitchell G Drive, Tuxbury.
Good to see you, Charlie.
Good to see you, Scott. That's a good job for you. I'm getting a little concerned about the sewer fund. I'm looking at the retained earnings. I'm looking at the stabilization fund. And also, I don't see anything about all the accounts receivable. But by my math here, it looks like we got kind of like almost $9 million in the sewer. I haven't even looked at the water yet. What are you going to do with all that money? I mean, that's more than we have in the stabilization fund for the whole general fund. And also, as far as the rates go, I'm sure the selectmen have already voted to take money and put that into the general fund this year. I haven't seen anything about that either. It's just that my water bill is getting a little high. And a lot of residents I've talked to... I'll just keep talking till you get up to... This is from Mr. Montori.
Okay.
No, I'm all set. I'm just giving you an introduction.
I'll cut you off and just let Mr. Montori come up and answer your questions.
I wasn't sure if you were done yet.
If he's still charged with sewer fund, or... Been a while since I've been up there.
So the retained earnings that we have are going to be utilized over the next at least five years to help offset the debt service that we have in our sewer enterprise fund. This year, we're using $900,000 to help offset the sewer enterprise fund, specifically rate the debt service that's allowing rates not to increase. And over the next five years, we plan to do the same thing. So next year, we're planning to use $800,000. Year after that, $700,000, then another $700,000, and then $500,000, $500,000. So over the next, you know, five years, we're going to use over, you know, close to $3.5 million to help offset the debt service that is so high in the sewer enterprise fund so we can help keep rates down, if not, you know, try not to increase them, but if they do increase to a minimum. So that's going to be the use of the retained earnings. Stabilization fund is in place, you know, in case we have any emergencies down the road, any infrastructure that we need to replace or fix in the sewer enterprise fund. Possibly use some to help with the new construction of the DPW facility since the sewer division is incorporated into that facility. Remember, we have 48 pump stations that we need to maintain, that we need to ensure are working on an annual basis. So having the stabilization fund and some retained earnings would be helpful to address any of that capital.
My question would be, how come you don't just don't pay it down right now? Because then you can save money. You can negotiate the bonds. I'm sure they're all callable, right?
They're callable at different times. When they are callable, we do refinance them. You can't pay them outright as if it was your mortgage. You have to continue to pay the debt service. That's how they were purchased. But we do refinance them when we have an opportunity. We refinance them, some of them this past year. Refinance them every year we have a possible call on the loans. But they're not the type of loans like a car payment, a car loan, or a mortgage.
Okay. The other question was just the accounts receivable. I know the accounts receivable has always been high on the sewer and the water. I don't know if that's ever been addressed. I mean, we had a discussion before, a few years back, in saying that that money goes back into retained earnings, where I always felt it should have gone back to the stakeholders, to people who had to pay their bill. But that money doesn't get back to the residents in any way, shape, or form.
I mean, all the money gets closed out at the end of the year and counted into retained earnings. And again, we're using those retained earnings to help keep rates from increasing as we did this year and last year, and I think the year before. So in essence, it is helping the ratepayers. Without those retained earnings, rates would be significantly higher. So in essence, it is going back to the ratepayers, but just in a different way.
It's just paying off the... I mean, I'm putting the money out, paying the rates are all based...
Charles, I just want to let you know you have 30 seconds left.
I could go on. I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Yep.
Anyone else rising on Article 9? Seeing no one? I'll take a vote. All those in favor of adopting Article 9 to raise and appropriate $6,797,181 for the purpose of this article, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, signify by saying nay. 125 to 1. The article is adopted. Article 10.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 10, raise and appropriate $7,466,378 for the purpose of the article.
Seeing no one rise, all those in favor of adopting the raising and appropriating of $7,466... $7,466,378 for the purpose of this article, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, signify by saying no. The article passes. Article 11.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 11, raise and appropriate $1,177,410 for the purpose of the article.
Seeing no one rise, we'll vote on Article 11. All those in... Oh, someone is rising. I was too quick.
Barbara Flanagan, 278 Pine Street. When this stormwater enterprise fund was first introduced, which I believe was just last year, we were told it to be about $25 or so, maybe $45 for the year. We're paying $25 every time we get a water bill now. Is this going to just last for a year or two? Or is this going to go on forever?
When we presented the enterprise fund last year, we mentioned that the fee would most likely be $75 for the year, $25 per billing cycle. That was the plan when we came into this new fee. That's what we presented when the enterprise fund was formed and when we presented the budget last year at town meeting. It's not going to go away. It's something we need to do to keep in compliance with the EPA permit for stormwater compliance. The town has an incredible amount of drainage that needs to be improved. As you may know from going around town, there are areas that have no drainage, need drainage installed, have drainage that doesn't work, have areas of town that are in need of drainage improvements. This fund will address that, and that's the plan in the future. So I don't anticipate this fee going away. But based on how we structured the fee, how we structured the budget and the approach to the budget, we don't anticipate it going up, that the $75 will remain where it is. And all of the money in this budget, in this, from this fee, goes to stormwater compliance, perma-compliance, and it goes to infrastructure improvements of the drainage system, capital improvements of the drainage system, and maintenance of the drainage system. There are no salaries or allocations in this budget.
So there's no plan to end it?
There is no plan to end it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Article 11, seeing no one else rise. There's a motion to adopt Article 11 to raise and appropriate $1,177,410 for the purpose of this article. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Signify by saying no. The vote is unanimous and passes. Article 12.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 12, raise and appropriate $543,398 for the purpose of the article.
Seeing no one rise, there's a motion to adopt Article 12. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Signify by saying no. The article passes. Okay, Article 13.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 13, transfer $1,387,668 from the stabilization fund for the purpose of the article.
Is there any discussion on the article?
Hi, my name is Laura Kaplan and I reside at 11 Lenacca Road and pertaining to Article 13 and specific sidewalks, $250,000. Could you allude, Mr. Moderator, if I may directly?
When you speak, if you just stay there in front of the microphone, it will pick you up. But when you sway, it loses... I'm only catching every other word.
All right. On Article 13, sidewalks in particular, the $250,000, may I, Mr. Moderator, direct this question to the town manager to explain what the $250,000 entails for sidewalks, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The $250,000 will be used to, for Phase 1 of a new sidewalk on Whipple Road, and it will be from Pleasant Street to Pine Street.
And what type of curb are you willing to go, do you know? Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. For the record, Kevin Hardeman, Town Engineer. Typically, we would use asphalt sidewalk and asphalt curbing because that's a cost savings for the town. We were able to get more sidewalk installed using that.
And what about resident safety, especially on Whipple?
So the standard that we use is a six-inch reveal on the curb, and that prevents vehicles from jumping the curb like you can see with Cape Cod berm, which is a low profile. We use a high-profile curb to prevent, to improve pedestrian safety.
Great, so there won't be any issue then next year when the plows apply and then hit the curb, right?
No, the asphalt is resilient to plows.
Oh, okay. Thank you for your indulgence. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you. So this... Oh, go ahead.
Hello, Meredith Chase, 19 Park Ave. Where it says "Police Department upgrades," I was wondering if we had any information on what that means specifically, or if that hasn't been determined yet?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
For Police Department upgrades, I was wondering if you have specific information on what those are exactly, or if it hasn't been determined?
I'm sorry, thank you. I do. So the police upgrades are going to be for three areas. The first would be for an upgrade to the gym and fitness area in the building. Estimated cost, $37,335. There will be an upgrade to the training room, upgrade to all the computer technology within the training room. That's projected to be approximately $142,000. And then finally, there will be an upgrade to the outdated cameras and locking devices within the building. That's approximately... and video system in the building. That's $78,333.
Thank you.
So Article 13 requires a two-thirds vote, so I'm going to have the counters count. All those in favor of Article 13, please rise until the counter asks you to sit.
I was never very good at that, Rich. Some people had the skill. My mind, you know, would wander.
All those opposed to Article 13, please rise. So the vote count... Oh, I'm sorry. The vote count was 121 to 3. The article passes with 83% of the vote.
With 83?
83.
Needed.
Oh, there were 83 needed, my apologies. 83 votes needed, there were 121. Guess we can call that a rookie mistake. I probably could have done a voice count on that one. Article 14.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 14, transfer $72,500 from sewer retained earnings for the purpose of the article.
Seeing no one rise? All those in favor of adopting Article 14, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If you... If opposed, signify by saying no. The article passes. Article 15.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 15, transfer $1,957,500 from water retained earnings for the purpose of the article.
Is there any discussion on the article? Seeing none? All those in favor of adopting Article 15, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If opposed, signify by saying no. The article passes. Article 16.
The Finance Committee moves that the town hereby appropriates the sum of $1,500,000 for the cost of installing and replacing water lines in the town and for the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the town treasurer, with the approval of the selectman, is hereby authorized to borrow said sum under the... under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 8, parentheses 5, of the Massachusetts General Laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received by the town upon sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Thank you. That was a mouthful. All right. This Article 16 also requires a two-thirds vote, so I'm going to take it in reverse order. All those opposed to Article 16, please signify by saying no. All those in favor of Article 16, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
That is unanimous. That is a unanimous vote. Article 17.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 17, transfer $49,636.76 from bond premiums for the purpose of the article.
Thank you. Seeing no one rise? All those in favor of Article 17, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, signify by saying no. That's unanimous. Article 17 passes. Article 18.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 18, transfer $25,000 from the overlay surplus for the purpose of the article.
Seeing no one rise? Article 18. All those in favor of Article 18, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If opposed, signify by saying no. Article 18 passes unanimously. Article 19.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 19.
Seeing no one rise? We'll take a vote on Article 19. All those in favor of adopting Article 19, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying no. Article 19 passes unanimously. Article 20.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 20.
Charlie Anzoni, 180 Mitchell G Drive. Just a quick question from Mr. Montori, Mr. Moderator. Do you know what our percentage is on the... from the state? Is it still in the 20% range? Or it really dropped down a few years ago, and I think most of that money is coming out of the resident's pocket. Is that still what's happening, or...
Mr. Anzoni, you're asking what the state percentage that we're getting back, or what we're getting from the state?
What our percentage is from the state, the state funds.
Okay.
It used to be 50, 60 on the dollar. That's my question. What is it now?
Okay.
Mr. Montori, get this exercise up and down.
Yeah, that's fine. I was just going to pull up the spreadsheet. So the average that we've received since we've adopted the CPA fund has been approximately 30%. Over the past couple of years, it's been between 18 and 19%. This year, I believe it's going to be closer to 30% that we'll receive, but we haven't seen our final numbers yet.
So this estimate is based on 18, 30? What percentage did you base your estimate on?
So this is based on the revenue we will collect from taxes, and then we break it out, 10% for open space, 10% for housing. The rest goes to the budget of reserve. We keep 5% for appropriation, and that's how we come up with the number.
The final question is, there used to be a lot more money in that fund. Has that all been expended, or is there another type of fund that it's being held in, or...
We have been using it. We've done a lot of work down with the Livingston Street Recreation Fields, installing lights, upgrades to the Little League fields, so we have been spending it. This year, we're not taking any... undertaking any projects, so that fund at the end of the year when it closes out should have more money in it. And just to go back to your earlier question, we project what we received the previous year for state aid going forward. We never really changed that projection. It's based on actual receipts.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Seeing no one else rise? On Article 20, all those in favor of adopting Article 20, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If opposed, signify by saying no. Article 20 passes unanimously. Article 21.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 21.
Seeing no one rise? All those in favor of adopting Article 21, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If opposed, signify by saying no. Article 20 pass... 21 passes unanimously. Article 22.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 22.
Seeing no one rise? All those in favor of adopting Article 22 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If opposed, signify by saying no. Article 22 passes unanimously. Article 23.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 23.
All right. Seeing no one rise? All those in favor of Article 23, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If opposed, signify by saying no. Article 23 passes unanimously. Article 24.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 24.
Welcome. Please just state your name and address for the record.
Dustin Weir, 426 Chandler Street. The way this is written is kind of generic. I was wondering if the town manager would like to... could give us a little more details to what's going on in this article?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and great question. Thank you. We did want to keep it generic, and the reason for that is, in the past, we have been very specific to the project and the particular easement for that project a town meeting needed to approve. But what we have found out is during the course of different projects with the DPW, easements are needed throughout the year, and there may not be a town meeting coming in time to grant the easement or accept the gift of easement. So in order to keep the project going, not delay the project, we're asking town meeting to give the Board of Selectmen the authority to accept the easements in conjunction with all DPW projects, but it's only good for next fiscal year. And we'll have to come back to town meeting each year and ask for authorization for the following year. So it's not forever. It's just one year at a time.
And then any projects right now in mind that this might apply to?
Yeah, it could be any of our sidewalk projects we take on, our water project, something could come up, water distribution projects, even our roadway projects, depending on what we're doing. But mostly sidewalks give us some of our bigger challenges when it comes to easements.
All right. Article 24 is... requires a two-thirds vote, so I'm going to take this vote in reverse order. Those opposed to the adoption of Article 24, please... All right. Those who would like to adopt Article 24, please rise. That is a unanimous vote. Article 24 passes. Article 25.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 25.
Seeing no one rise? This article also requires a two-thirds vote, so I will take it in reverse order as well. All those opposed to Article 25, please signify by rising. All those in favor of Article 25 being adopted, please signify by rising. That vote is unanimous. Article 25 passes. Article 26.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 26.
So we're on a roll with these two-thirds votes, so I will do the same thing here and take this in reverse order. Article 26, all those opposed to Article 26 being adopted, please signify by rising. All those in favor of Article 26 being adopted, please signify by rising. That is a unanimous vote. Article 26 passes. Article 27.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 27.
The floor is yours.
Dustin Weir, 426 Chandler Street. Just trying to get a scale for the... for this. How many Section 7 exemptions were applied for and granted last, say, last year, the year before that?
We have 30.
Okay, so 30, and then the $500 amount is all reimbursed by the state currently. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And then, so the additional 500 that we're going to add is going to be covered by the town or the district, or...
Yes, or overly.
Okay. And that accounts for approximately $31,000 of the home value? And that, that accounts for approximately $31,000 of the home value? In taxes, that $500?
Yeah, again, we have an overlay reserve that we set aside each year that's built into the overall budget that was passed tonight. And it will be taken out of there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dustin. All right. Article 27, we'll take in normal order. All those in favor of adopting Article 27, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, signify by saying no. Article 27 passes unanimously. Article 28, I'm gonna invite the petitioner up to speak on this article. Welcome, Paige. If you can just give us your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Does that sound all right? Hi, good evening. My name is Paige Impang, 30 Geddes Drive. I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Wilson for stepping forward to fill this position this evening for us. It's very much appreciated. I rise this evening on behalf of the residents who have been working on Article 28. Board and committee members have expressed a high level of concern about not having been made aware of the citizen's petition prior to the warrant being published. As such, we'd like more time to address their concerns. So, on behalf of the many residents who have worked on researching this article, I respectfully withdraw the article at this time. And we'll bring it back for a fall town meeting.
Thank you, Paige.
Thank you.
Okay. So, that's taken as a motion to withdraw the article. So, I'd like to ask for a vote. All those in favor of withdrawing Article 28, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, signify by saying no. Article 28 has been withdrawn. It's a simple majority vote. So, thank you very much for your work on it, Paige.
Thank you.
All right. Article 29. It's gonna take me a minute, Rob. Hold on. Town bylaws require a secret ballot in any case where an amendment to the personnel bylaws is proposed. And such amendment changes the salaries of town employees. The vote of said amendment shall be by secret ballot on any vote. At each door, there are secret ballot boxes. Voter ribbons shall be displayed, or you will not receive a ballot, a yes or no ballot. Once the moderator announces the voting will begin, no one shall enter the gymnasium. The election staff will hand you a secret ballot. The secret ballot is serrated and divided into two parts, yes or no. If you want to adopt the article, please put the yes section in the ballot box and discard the other section in the provided bucket. If you want to defeat the article, put the no section in the ballot box and discard the other section in the provided bucket. Please remain in the corridor or cafeteria until you are allowed to re-enter the gymnasium. And if this were the last article of the night, I would tell you to just, that you could go home. But we do have Article 3-32 that we need to discuss. So, if you can come back in, that would be fantastic. So, what do I do? The voting will begin? Okay. So, the voting will begin? If we could start with the bleachers over there to the back corner? Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on one second. I need Finance Committee to come up and make a motion. And then, there's a question.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 29, raise and appropriate and transfer from available funds $111,251 for the purpose of the article.
And we have a question on the floor.
Yes. I was wondering why there wasn't a motion on it. I have a question down at the bottom of that chart. From grade one to grade two, activities coordinator and clerk. What department is this about?
The activities coordinator is in the senior center. And the principal clerk, the one we have right now is in the police department that handles the desk from four to midnight.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Did you get her address? All right, you're all set. Okay. All right. Let the voting begin. Let's start with everyone on the bleachers. We'll start in that direction. If you wanna head to vote first, that would be great. Do your best to social distance as you go. And then, we will work through the folks right in front of me. Rob, I almost missed a motion.
Good job, Rob.
There's no one coming back. All right. Out of the first three rows to this side of the room, why don't you head back and grab your secret ballot? All right. The folks right in front of me to the left, if you wanna head back and cast your secret ballot. The final, the elected officials. And finally, any elected officials that need to go cast a ballot, please head on to the back of the room. Don't forget to come back.
You know, it's been a weird year.
Did you see Timmy and Lisa?
I did, yeah. I, I, I think I saw it on Facebook, maybe.
Voted, please head on to the back. Any final voters?
I'll be six feet behind you.
If you would like to allow the residents back into the auditorium, that'd be great. Welcome back. Christine, bring them back. Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely talk. Thank you, guys. Oh, is this for me? Okay. All right. Welcome back. It looks like we may have some, a few people still out in the hallway. If you can just let them know they're welcome to come back in so we can address the next article. And I can let them know the results of this article. But if I don't see a move, I'm just gonna keep moving. Do you need these back? So, Article 29 passes. All right. We have one more matter to discuss this evening. Article 3-32. Yes.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 3-32.
The Finance Committee moves to pass Article 3-32. Any discussion?
Yes, please. Laura Kaplan, 11 Lenacar Road. I was wondering, Town Moderator, if I could address this question to the town manager. Could you please confirm the amount of funds that were received by the state under Chapter 90 this year for sidewalks?
So, we are receiving $923,000 for Chapter 90 money. That will go towards roadway projects and sideways, sidewalk projects and other infrastructure, roadway infrastructure projects. Of the $923,000, we will be using 306,000 of it to help pay for the Shashin Street sidewalk. And 50,000 will be used for the design of the Whipple Road Phase 1 project.
Okay. So, less than half of the Chapter 90 is going to be put towards the use for installation of sidewalks?
That's correct.
And do you know the curbing again? Or do we need to ask the town engineer for the sidewalks again? Please, thank you. Especially on Shashin. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The curbing on Shashin Street will be asphalt, as well as the sidewalk will be asphalt.
I thought at the last meeting, and correct me if I'm wrong, Town Manager, that we were not gonna be using the asphalt curbing. I thought it was gonna be more of the concrete grade. Or did that change because of the budget?
I'm not sure we ever addressed it. We've used-
I'm sorry to discuss it.
Yeah, I honestly don't recall. But we've always used, in, in the cases of the sidewalks we're building now, we've been using the asphalt.
All right, thank you.
Hello, Mr. Moderator. Mark Kratman, 8 Sunset Road. While I agree that this use of funds to put sidewalks in where there are no sidewalks, my concern is also with the asphalt for the curbing. I understand that it's cost-effective to put it in there to start. But I think we should keep an eye on them. As plows go up and down those roads, they do tear up those curbing. And over a number of years, replacing it year after year after year may not be cost-effective to putting granite curbing in. So, I would just like to, after they're put in and a year goes by, if we have to replace them, maybe, I know the planning board is requiring all new sidewalks going in to be cement sidewalks and granite curbing when developers put in their sidewalks. And the town is putting in asphalt and bit concrete. So, I would just like to keep an eye on it and make sure that, you know, over a number of years, we're just not spending more money replacing it than what we could have put in in the first place. So, just a comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mark. All right. The FinCom has recommended adoption of Article 3-32. Seeing no one else rise, all those in favor of adopting 3.32, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, signify by saying no. That article passes unanimously. Just a quick prep for Wednesday. Special Town Meeting will begin at 7:00 PM on Wednesday. It will be followed by the conclusion of the Annual Town Meeting, which will begin at 7:30. If you've taken a look ahead at the zoning article that's going to be presented, it will be broken into eight sections. Purpose and Authority, Definitions, Admin and Enforcement, Establishment of Districts, District Regulations, Site Development and Standards, Special Use Regulations, and Other Development Regulations. So if you have an opportunity to take a read through it, it's a pretty lengthy article. There'll be people here, obviously, to answer your questions and provide you guidance. Thank you for making this evening successful, and I look forward to seeing you on Wednesday. Oh, hold on. I, I, I made a mistake. Second one of the night. Rob, can I get a motion?
I don't have the wording.
Missed, Mr. Cos... Oh, sorry.
I move to recess Annual Town Meeting until Wednesday, May 5, 2021, at 7:30 PM.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? I didn't think so. We are in recess. See you on Wednesday night.